All right, good evening. This is the October 7, 2020 Cottage Grove City Council meeting, which I'm calling to order. Before we do the Pledge of Allegiance, I did want to read a quick statement as we've been now since we started COVID. Because of the reduced capacity of our city council chambers due to the state's distancing requirements and recognizing some residents will be more comfortable attending the meeting virtually, we are providing for public input via Zoom. Please visit our website at cottagegrovemn.gov, click on the Public Meetings Quick Link box, and then click on the October 7, 2020 Meeting. You'll find a variety of options if you would like to speak during open forum or at any regular agenda items. We want to be transparent, accessible, and inclusive, and we hope these measures will accommodate everyone who wishes to participate in the open and public meetings. And again, there is a Q&amp;A button on the Quick Links box that you can put your questions in, and I'll see it here. All right? So with that, next item on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, will the clerk please do the roll?
Councilmember Mills?
Here.
Councilmember Dennis?
Here.
Councilmember Thede?
Here.
Councilmember Olson?
Here.
Mayor Bailey?
Here. The next item on our agenda is open forum. This is the opportunity for anybody that wants to speak on something that's not on tonight's agenda is welcome to do so. We don't have anybody from the public in our, in front of us this evening, and I'm not seeing anybody under the Q&amp;A, so I will go ahead and close open forum, and we'll move to number five, which is adoption of the agenda, and I would ask Councilmember Dennis to make that motion with an addendum.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll move to adopt the agenda and, for the record, to allow the community to know that upon the conclusion of tonight's meeting that we will be going into what is called a closed session so that we can conduct a security briefing.
Okay, so that is being added to tonight's agenda. So with that, we've got the motion. I'll need a second.
Second.
So I have the motion by Councilmember Dennis, second by Councilmember Thede. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is presentations. We have two this evening. The first one is the 2020 General Election Voting, and our city clerk slash HR slash, oh, I'm just having fun with Joe here. Joe Fishbach is going to, who handles all of our election data and information and such in Cottage Grove here, and being that there's a lot of concern, you know, with COVID and all the, you know, voter irregularities that people think may or may not be happening or suppression and that, we wanted to make sure that we could share with the public what we're doing to allow everyone the right to vote and different ways of voting and how we're going to deal with this safely. So Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I do have the pleasure of presenting the 2020 voting procedures to you tonight. So basically, there are three common ways to vote in this year's election. The two other ones that are not so common are if you have an agent that you need to have vote for you, or if you're military overseas, so you probably are already in the process if you're using that option. So the first option is you can vote absentee by mail. So if you go to the website, Minnesota, or www.minvotes.org, you can complete the application either online, or they also have a paper copy. I would recommend that people go and do that as soon as possible, because what they have to do is they have to look at your application, process it through the state system, mail you out a ballot, and then you have to have time to vote and mail it back to them. You can drop it off as well at a Washington County Service Center if needed, but like I said, I would do that as soon as possible to make sure that you have enough time to get that processed. The second way to absentee vote is to do that in person, and you can do that at any Washington County location. The closest one for voters in Cottage Grove is the Washington County Service Center at 13,000 Ravine Parkway, so the building right next to us here. They are open Monday through Friday, 8 to 4:30, and November 2, they'll be open until 5:00. And the Saturday before the election, they'll also be open. This gives you the opportunity to vote right there. Seven days before the election, you actually put the ballot into the vote tabulator. Right now, you would put it in sealed envelope, and they would do their process. Like most public buildings, masks are required if you want to go to absentee vote there. And if you're up in Cottage, or sorry, if you're up in Woodbury or Forest Lake or things like that, you can vote anywhere at any Washington County Service Center. So I know they have one in Forest Lake, Stillwater, Woodbury, and Cottage Grove. You can vote at any one of those. And if you do absentee vote, you can actually track your absentee ballot on the Minnesota Secretary of State's website. And absentee voting for this county is administered by Washington County. The city doesn't really have any say or anything to do with that process, so if you have any questions regarding your absentee ballot, we would recommend that you call Washington County at 430-6000. But like I said, you could go to the Minnesota Secretary of State's website, plug in your name, date of birth, and how you supplied your information for the absentee ballot, and it will tell you if, once you mailed it in, if they have received it and what the status of your ballot is. And then the third common way for anybody to vote in Washington County is to vote in person on November 3. So the polls are open at 7:00 a.m. and they close at 8:00 p.m. Cottage Grove does have seven precincts. The best way to find out where you vote is to go to pollfinder.sossecretaryofstate.state.mn.us. Basically, you plug in your zip code, and then you plug in your street number and the street name and, or sorry, house number and street name, and it will come up. And if you have any questions about that, certainly just give us a call too, and we can help you with that. We do want to let people know that the busiest times at the polling places are 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., and then 3:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m., so if somebody's looking to get in and out as quick as possible, I would recommend avoiding those times. So we do have poll pads this year. Some people might have seen these either in the news or at a different county if they've recently moved to Washington County. They are new to Washington County this year. Voters may choose any line to vote. If people recall, like, we would have letters A through E, you'd have to go to that book, you'd have to sign your name on the roster. This is all electronic, so basically, you can go to any line. You don't have to sign a paper roster, you would just sign a paper sheet and move on to get your ballot. So I think we all believe that it speeds up the process quite a bit. So here's a picture of what the poll pad would look like. So it's quite the machine. So it has the machine, and then it has a printer that automatically prints off where you have to sign. The state of Minnesota still requires a wet signature, so that's why a receipt prints out, then you sign it, and then move on to the ballot judge. So I want to talk about ballot integrity a little bit. I know that it's been in the news a bit. So basically, today, the ballots were dropped off at City Hall directly by the printer. They are locked in my office until we basically give them to the head judge the day before the election, kept in a locked room. We double-checked to make sure the number of ballots we get are what the number is that they told us they were giving us. We release them to the head judge the day before the election. They sign off that they took possession of them. When they take them to the precinct on election day, the packets are counted again to make sure that they're all there. You only get a ballot when you give the ballot judge a receipt, so if you need a ballot, you register, you have to sign your wet signature on that receipt, you bring a different receipt to the ballot judge. They get that receipt, and then they give you the ballot, so there's always an accounting of what is happening in the polling place. And then, at the end of the night, all the used ballots, they are sealed and sent to Washington County in case there's a dispute with the election or within 1%, so an automatic recount. So sealed boxes for both used ballots, and then we take the unused ballots, and we keep them here until the canvassing of all the elections, not just city council race or mayor race, but all the elections, all the way up to the federal offices. So now I want to shift gears a little bit, so we're going to talk about what we do or what we're doing for COVID-19 precautions. If anybody voted in the primary election, they'll kind of see what we've been doing. We're trying to follow the CDC and Minnesota Secretary of State guidelines. We've been working with our in-house expert, Captain Gwen Martin with the PD. Obviously, we have hand sanitizer when you come into the polling place, and when you leave the polling place. We have masks that are provided for election judges and voters. Basically, the guidance by the Secretary of State is people do need to wear a mask when they're in the polling place. We have Plexiglas barriers that we purchased. Here's one of the volunteers that's actually working at the Government Center right now for absentee. So this is just like a physical barrier that will help prevent the spread of COVID. We have signage and floor markings, so like six feet apart. We want to make sure that people are adhering to social distancing. We're trying to hire extra judges for disinfecting surfaces, so if somebody goes into a ballot booth and uses it, we want to wipe it down if we can before somebody uses it again. And we also have the option of curbside voting if somebody doesn't want to go into the polling place for whatever reason. So that's what I have for a presentation. I certainly ask people to call if they have any questions regarding any procedure or process, and I will stand for questions.
All right. So thank you, Joe, by the way, for doing that. It was a request of mine a while back to just share with the public, since there's so, like you said earlier, there's so many comments about, you know, what do I do for voting during COVID? What about integrity of the ballots? And that's why I think you did a great job. What's a little different, I guess, from us to the rest of the county is the city of Cottage Grove, actually, you run this, the election in the city of Cottage Grove, and then we obviously partner with the county, as you mentioned earlier. So also, any questions at all from Joe at this point? All right, Joe, thank you for sharing that with us this evening, and I guess the main message is it's safe, you'll be safe, and please vote. You've got many ways to do it. Thank you, Joe. All right. Another important topic, which we have a presentation on this evening, is the 3M PFC settlement. And what's being presented to us this evening is the draft conceptual drinking water supply plan, excuse me, by our Public Works Director, Ryan Burfin. So, Ryan, welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is, at least for me, an exciting topic to talk about, as we've been working at it for many, many years. So here to talk about the draft plan that was recently put out by the state of Minnesota, talk about a little bit of specifics of it, what it means to Cottage Grove, and what some of the different options are. First little background on the 3M settlement agreement. So February 20, 2018 is when the state settled the 3M for $850 million related to PFAS, formerly PFC contamination in the East Metro. This is related to numerous dump sites that allowed PFAS to get into the groundwater and impact both private and public water supplies. With the settlement, the MPC and DNR were listed as the co-trustees of these funds, and they then developed three working groups in late 2018 to create this drinking water supply plan for the East Metro. And this plan is going to detail how to use the funds, what's the treatment going to be, and what's the long-term plan for O&M and future changes with PFAS. The three groups are the 3M and Government Working Group. That's a group that our administrator, Jennifer Levitt, sits on. It's mostly made up of administrators. 3M does sit on there, and then also some other agencies. There's a Citizen and Business Working Group. That's more of an ad hoc group. There is representation from each community, but they aren't specifically necessarily representing a community. That can be residents or business owner. And then there's a technical subgroup of drinking water. I do sit on that working group. That's mostly engineering and public work staff from different communities in the county, and also other technical staff from the state and Washington County as well. So this process has been going on, like I said, since 2018. We've had mostly monthly working group meetings here at City Hall, more recently, virtually with COVID. The public meetings have also been held throughout East Metro. There's been numerous public meetings at different locations as they've been working through the process to try and keep the public informed, and then also one-on-one meetings with cities and townships, which different staff and elected officials from all the communities have been a part of. The original goal was to release the draft plan in December of 2019. There have been a few different delays, which resulted in the draft plan being released here on September 10. A few things I do want to touch on quickly before I talk about the draft plan. There's been some reoccurring questions, different questions and comments that we've gotten from residents here in Cottage Grove and throughout the East Metro. One is what's the health effects of PFAS? So when we have different limits of a certain substance in drinking water, it's really based on the effects it has on a person, and what is that safe level that we have to stay under? And really, there's a lot of research that's been going on for many, many years. It's mostly at a state and national level. And for Minnesota, it's the Department of Health or MDH that does this research and also works with different federal agencies on research as well. So if folks have specific questions, concerns, want to know what are these health impacts, I won't go into them tonight, but there is a website I've listed here that has a lot of good information on that that people can go to, and also James Kelly with the MDH, he's a very good resource if people have questions or concerns. Another topic is private well sampling. This is also completed by MDH, and there's thousands of private wells outside of these municipal wells in the East Metro. And testing of these started many, many years ago, probably in the mid-2000s, I believe. Some areas in Cottage Grove that first were tested and had PFAS in them were in the Langdon neighborhood, next to Public Works, or down in the River Acres neighborhood. Like I said, this is completed by the Department of Health. Like we see with our municipal wells, once you're tested, levels don't tend to fluctuate too greatly over time. So it can be a few years before you may have retesting, but certainly it's something that can be requested to have another test done, because levels can change. And also, if the state lowers the limits, then they take a look at what they've tested in the past, and is there concerns of certain areas? So back in 2017, when they lowered the limits and impacted Cottage Grove so greatly, they went around and did hundreds and hundreds of new tests to make sure they were looking at all those private wells and making sure they're getting what we call whole-house filter. So it's the same filter we use on our municipal wells, just a little smaller scale. It treats the entire house with that GAC filtration, same level of treatment, same process that the city gets. If you do have questions, folks can reach out to Jenny Yinling. She works for the Department of Health and is a great resource to talk about well testing. And the last one is the Health Index. So when we look at PFAS, there are seven different chemicals that the state is looking at, and they each have their own level that's safe. Safe, I'll use that. It's not maybe the right word, but a level we want to stay below when we look at drinking water. But the Health Index is what do they all do together? So maybe all seven of them are below their individual limits, but when you add that together, it goes over what they consider the limit for PFAS. So the Health Index kind of brings it all together to one number that's kind of universal when we're talking about PFAS levels. Like I said, there's these several different compounds, and that helps summarize it. If the Health Index is over one, that's what right now triggers treatment. If it's under one, it's considered, you know, below that limit. That's acceptable in drinking water. The reason I mention that is the different options that they have treat to different levels, different levels of that Health Index. When we look at the Cottage Grove water system, we have actually been developing what we consider our own treatment plan for many years. We consider it the best option for Cottage Grove, and as part of this process, they did ask each community, what is your plan, and what do you consider the best option? There's a lot going on in this image, but I'll talk through it briefly. We have 12 different wells, which I've numbered on the screen. Wells 1, 2, and 10 are in the low zone. Well, this well 13 with asterisks, I'll talk about later. Wells 3 through 9 are intermediate zone. They're grouped very closely together, very close to Park High School. And then Wells 11 and 12 are in our high-pressure zone, more in the north end of town. When you look at our wells, many of them are over the Health Index of one, which is why we have the temporary treatment in place to make sure we're meeting those requirements from the state. But with our permanent plan, what we'd like to see is a low-zone temporary, low-zone permanent treatment plant. That's that WTP in the bottom of the screen, and then an intermediate-zone treatment plant as well with that cluster well field of 3 to 9. 11 and 12 are more by themselves, but they're big wells, really high-producing wells, so we do want to keep and treat those. This yellow line is what we call a raw water line. We'll actually pipe the water to the treatment plant directly, treat it in that intermediate zone, and then it can go out to the city. Wells 1 and 2 are two original wells. They're small. They don't produce much water, and it's not very cost-effective to try and treat those. So what we had requested is, is let's replace those with a new well 13 that's got the same amount of capacity and much closer to the water treatment plant on that route from well 10 to the water treatment plant. So that's what that well 13 would be. That would be a new well in town. That's the plan we came up with, and then when the state came out with their options, they're pretty much on the same page. There's very little difference from what we came up with. It's just about what level do we treat to and what wells are treated. And that's what shows here. They came up with three options, options 1, 2, and 3. I want to note when it says option 1 preferred, this is a state figure, and they prefer option 1. We prefer option 2, which I'll talk about, but that's why it says preferred by option 1. Option 1 treats everything below a Health Index of .5, so essentially, they're going to treat to half of what they consider the safe level right now. What that means for Cottage Grove is eight of our wells are treated, which is all those wells in the intermediate zone, and then well 10 in the low zone. Two wells are replaced, wells 1 and 2, like I talked about. Those are both over .5, and they would be replaced with that new well 13. This comes with 40 years of O&M maintenance. The figure on the left, that's the entire cost for all of the East Metro for this plan. So you can see the total capital cost. That initial construction's $300 million. Talks about O&M, and then some of these other costs, the $41 million, that's for hooking up additional neighborhoods. Right now, we're hooking up the River Acres and Granada neighborhood. That would be additional neighborhoods that they have identified throughout the East Metro to hook up. That $38 million, that's for during construction. If there's changes, or they have to add to the scope of a project, or we need to do more on a project, there's cost overruns. The $70 million in drinking water protection, that's being set aside where is there a future well that's going to go over the limit? Is there a neighborhood? Is there a neighborhood that needs to be connected in the future? It might not be cost-effective now, but maybe five or 10 years from now, it is cost-effective and the best way to go. And then there's some sustainability money with groundwater sustainability. And then there's state administration for the life of this. One thing to note, the O&M for private wells, the $19 million, that's actually 100 years. And across the board, they've stuck with 100 years of O&M for those who stay on a private well with an in-house filter. When you look at a public water system, at some point, if we need to take over those plants, we have a big system, a big city to cover those costs. It can be spread out and it's much less of a burden. If you take over that filter and it's $1,000 every year to replace the filter, plus $3,000 to get a new filter after the actual tank is, you know, no longer useful, that's a pretty expensive cost. So this is coming from the state. They want to give more years of maintenance for those wells. Option 2, that's the one that Cottage Grove prefers. Now you're treating everything above HI of .3. Really, it's the same plan for Cottage Grove, it's just we just treat well 11. So if you go back to this image here, well 11 is above that limit, so it would be included in the treatment. And then we would build that raw water line down to our water treatment plant. That's really the only difference in those two options. It's pretty similar. And then option 3, this is the same as option 1, treat everything above HI of .5, but it would involve hooking up Oakdale and Lake Elmo to St. Paul Regional Water, which I know is Cottage Grove, but we never want to see. We're not part of that option. But that comes with some really high O&M costs. So what that does is, for Cottage Grove, it's the same treatment, same eight wells as option 1, but it's 21 years of O&M instead of 40. So not really a great option when you look at Cottage Grove. At option 2 has 35 years of O&M. That's the one we're preferring. It's still a long time for O&M, but it gets that extra well that's treated. Like I said, option 2, that's what we want to see. That's the direction we're intending to go. We will have a full comment letter back for the council at the next meeting, but that's kind of our main comment to the state. It still provides that extensive period of O&M and then it does treat well 11 right now, which we think is important. Going back to well 12, that's pretty close to well 11. Some of that raw water line is already in place. So if well 12 goes over and it's very low right now, that's money that's been set aside to connect those two wells. So that can be done pretty cost-effectively at a later date using the settlement funds that are being set aside. When you look at what option 2 means for Cottage Grove, it's 47 million in capital construction. So that's a big project to undertake over the next few years. That number is actually going to go up a little bit. As we worked with the state, they were a little low on their treatment capacity we need, so you'll see that go up a little bit as they finalize the plan. And then 36 million in O&M. And the O&M, that'll cover all those change outs. So in those big plants, when we have to change out the carbon every two to three years, that'll be covered in all the operations and maintenance of that plant for the next 35 years. So our residents wouldn't see any change, you know, to what they're experiencing right now because really all that treatment would be paid for by the state. And this really gives us a good amount of time to plan for, you know, what happens in 35 years if the city has to take this over. We can plan for that accordingly. It gives us a lot of time to do that. Last thing to touch on is our neighborhood water connections. So the blue stars is down the southern end of town, River Acres, that's being connected this year. And the other blue stars are Granada Avenue neighborhood that's being connected. The three yellow stars, those are locations that they've identified right now for an immediate connection as part of this plan. The one in the more towards the bottom right, that's by Public Works, the Langdon neighborhood. And then the two yellow ones more in the northern part of town, that's Harkness Avenue by Hardwood. And then the Goodview Avenue, both north and south of 70th Street. Those are very close to existing water lines, cost-effective to install. The other three that we've had discussions on, one is Gray Cloud Trail down the lower left-hand part of the screen. The state, you know, they're seeing that as about a $5 million project. There's only about 20 homes, so they didn't see it as the most cost-effective solution. Their plan right now would be to stay on the whole house filters. But something we're going to be working with them on to see if we can have included because it is still pretty close to, you know, existing water mains. It's just not a lot of houses, but we're going to work with the state on that, see what we can do. On the upper right is Old Cottage Grove. They have included that right now. That's about a $26 million project by itself. So just because all of our water mains are west of Keats Avenue, it's a long race to run water. But they have earmarked that as a future project. So at this point, we see as we kind of develop and those water mains get closer, it could become cost-effective. Right now, there's only a handful of homes over the limit and the state will continue to test those homes and then provide the in-house treatment. And the folks that have in-house treatment or will get it, they're going to be treated to the same level. So right now, anything below, above one, well, whatever plan they choose is a .3 or .5. Everyone with a private well will be treated equally. So that's what they're showing for Old Cottage Grove at this point. On the bottom right is the Pine Cooley neighborhood, is their other rural neighborhood that has a fair number of wells. From that standpoint, they did a lot of modeling and we've looked at it as well. It's such a long dead end. It also needs some more development in that direction to get water closer. We got to look at the age of water. That's a big part of it. And with that long of a dead end, that water would get pretty old and really wouldn't be suitable for a drinking water system. But certainly as Cottage Grove develops, we'll make sure that money is set aside and that's something we can continue to look at. So last slide here, just talk about that public comment period that's open right now. It's 45 days. It closes on October 26th. And this plan can be reviewed and comments submitted on this website that I listed. And our intent as staff, we're going through this 720-page plan right now and we'll bring back a full list of comments on October 21st for council's approval. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Okay. Well, first of all, thank you, Ryan, and Jennifer and everybody else that have been working hard on this project for many, many years. And we already, I guess there was an article when it first was put out that had been quoted in there about option 2, which you said the city, which I also believe is the right way to go for a couple of reasons. One is because of the little lower. I mean, we all know over the years that that health-based value has been dropping as we learn more and more about this chemical. And so I think going to that lowest possible opportunity there for us and still giving us the O&M, I think is the right thing for the city of Cottage Grove. And I believe I even heard the Woodbury House different ideas and such, but they were actually happy with the option 2, too, because I know they were trying to get, like we are, to the lowest denominator. Yeah, Councilmember Dennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Ryan, first off, thank you. The level of dedication that you and your team and our city administrator put into this, it's been a level of due diligence and involvement that maybe many other people would have thrown their hands up and walked away. So it's just an incredible job on behalf of our city and our staff and all the people that live here. And so thank you very much for that. I did want to mention one thing just for folks at home that may be wondering, you know, what does it mean when you say low pressure, intermediate, and high pressure?
Yep. Yeah. So with Cottage Grove, we have a lot of elevation change. So we have three pressure zones. And that's a good question because sometimes when people think that if I'm in a low pressure zone, I have low water pressure. If I'm in a high pressure zone, I have high water pressure. It's more about, as we have a gravity system. So the higher the water tower is, the more water pressure you have at your house. Well, we have so much elevation change. If we had one pressure zone, you'd have zero PSI in the north end and 150 in the south end of town and you'd be blowing everyone's water heater. So we break up into three distinct water systems to make sure there's a roughly 40 to 80 PSI within each pressure system. So it's almost like three individual water systems we have in town, which makes it more complicated, especially when we're dealing with our wells right now. So that's really what we're looking at with those three pressure zones.
All right. Thank you for answering that. And then I just wanted to say that if you go back in the history and you look at, you know, when a certain company was making these products, you know, we can go back 50 or 60 years. And when you think about where we are right now with even temporary filtering systems and where we're going to be with this, we are going to be at the safest and highest level quality of water that we've had in this community in 50 to 60 years. So I think that's something that we can all feel really good about. And I also want to thank my council colleagues for their dedication on this. I know there's not a single person in this room who has not put this as a very high priority for us to work on and to do on behalf of the public. So I thank you very much for all of that good, hard work and we'll look forward to getting the final solution and getting it going. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I saw Councilmember Olson and I'll get Councilmember Bethany.
Thank you very much. Microphone issues. There we go. Ryan, thanks for the presentation. You know, the mayor can attest to the fact that we have been working through this issue in the city of Cottage Grove since 2006-ish, in partnership with the county and our state partners. When our city administrator was our city engineer, I know she spent an awful lot of time on this issue. And I appreciate the fact that everybody has been so engaged as it relates to making sure that we have the best possible outcome for the residents of Cottage Grove. And that includes the state, Attorney General, and 3M, frankly, for settling. So this is great news. The reason that I wanted to address you this evening is I had a couple of questions that have been posed to me. I know you briefly mentioned, you know, folks who run wells. And we are doing some work with the residents in River Acres and Granada to provide them with city water. But could you elaborate somewhat on what that process looks like when it comes to a point where we say, okay, city water is the right option for these particular folks? Because there's numerous elements to that, including development, et cetera, how you get the water to the people. So could you talk about that for a minute? And then I have one more question.
Yep. Yeah, certainly, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Olson. So when you look at those water connections, there's two parts to it as determining, you know, is it going to happen or not right now? One is the state did look at the cost effectiveness of it because when you look at that treatment of the whole house filter, like I mentioned, it's really the same treatment that we're going to have. So same treatment method, same quality of water coming out of those GAC filters. So they want to look at with that 100 years of O&M, what is the cost to hook up a neighborhood? How many millions of dollars is it versus, okay, if we've got 40 homes at, you know, $1,000 a year for 100 years, that's $100,000 plus some O&M and tank replacements. So they wanted to weigh that cost-benefit analysis for that 100 years. The other is just the proximity to city water mains. Is it, can we get pretty new water, we call it? You know, we want to be close to our water system. So it's not, we want water less than three days old that's going to everyone. We don't want, you know, a week or two weeks for the water to go down a really long pipe to a small neighborhood. So they look at that kind of feasibility as well. If it meets those criteria, that's when they've identified as a connection, like we are doing with the Granada and River Acres. And at that point, what everyone's kind of gone through this summer, it's a pretty big project. We got to run the water mains. It's a whole new utility in the road, brand new roadway when we're done. But it's, you know, an extensive project. And then we actually, as a city, ran the water service into everyone's home and did all the interior connections. And that was all paid for by the state and all managed by the city staff and our consultant, which we thought was important. Some communities choose to have the homeowner basically do that, front the cost, which can be $15,000, and then they'll get paid back. Well, just fronting $15,000 is a challenge. And then knowing how to work with these contractors, from a directional drilling contractor to a plumber to electrician to a well stealer, is a lot of work. So we've taken all that. So it's pretty hands-off, which we thought was important as well. So that's kind of the process that people are seeing.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I asked that question because I want people to know that there's a lot more to it than just saying, let's do city water. You have to have the infrastructure to be able to do that. And that can sometimes be challenging. But the way that we choose to mitigate that issue is what you talked about with the 100 years of O&M for property owners who, frankly, we can't reach with city water at this point. The next thing I wanted to ask you about was health-based values. There is not a national standard for, you know, perfluorochemicals for health-based values. And this is not just a Minnesota issue. They're finding perfluorochemicals in lots of places. You know, one of the big newsmakers has been Tennessee because of DuPont. But it's in a lot of spots and there's not a national health-based value that coincides with all of the other state health-based values. So understanding that and understanding that the Minnesota Department of Health is the one who actually sets the health-based values for Minnesota, and we've seen them lower quite a bit. Can you talk a little bit about what goes into determining what is quote-unquote "healthy"? Or from a scientific perspective, where they come to an understanding that .3 or .5 is the right health-based value?
Yep, certainly, Councilmember Olson. So in terms of how they set those values, that's mostly based on years and years of research, looking at actual populations, doing studies on populations where the impact's also doing, you know, more controlled testing and research in different labs. And that's something that the state helps to undertake, but it's a very extensive process. Like when the state updated the health-based values. And the health-based value, that's what's given to each PFAS chemical and what's that limit we have to hold to. It's years of research and then it's also peer-reviewed. So in the scientific community, all this is peer-reviewed and vetted before they come out with what a certain state may think is the correct level. I can say Minnesota's always been more on the safer side of things. They've always been lower. When you look at all the states in the country, some states have different chemicals that might be a little bit lower than Minnesota, but I'd say they've been, I don't know if I want to call it the cutting edge, but they've been more conservative in making sure, you know, they have a limit that's low enough. So that's certainly something they have done and continue, you know, we continue to see them do. They did change a few values back last year again, not as majorly as 2017, but they did reduce some more values again at that point. So it is an extensive process. And then in terms of a federal regulation, you know, when it's a health-based value, it's just a state level. MCL, we call it, is that federal regulated contaminant, which PFAS is not. And there is legislation and a process started for the EPA to do that. That also takes several years. And my own, I guess, thought would be that MCL they come out with still might be higher than what Minnesota has. And then the Minnesota would continue to govern. So that process has been started, but it does take some time.
Thank you for that. I wanted people at home watching this to understand that the Department of Health really is looking out for you. And the city of Cottage Grove is looking out for our residents. And that's why we're having this conversation this evening about which of the options that are out there might be preferable, et cetera. But the good news is we've seen the health-based value in the state of Minnesota drop considerably since the initial discovery that perfluorochemicals were a challenge. And it would be nice if there were federal legislation that passed at some point to protect all 50 states equally. But at least from where we sit here in the great state of Minnesota, we're in pretty good shape. And of course, the way that our system is set up in the city of Cottage Grove, whenever you turn on that tap to get a drink of water, it's below the health-based value, correct?
Yep. That's correct. And actually, I will just quickly add on to that. It's a good thing to mention, when you have these GAC filters and let's say the level is one, we're not treating right to one, the water that comes out of those is essentially at a zero, maybe .1. So these GAC filters are really good at removing essentially all detectable levels of PFAS. And it stays that way for a long time and that level stays very, very, very low. And then once you start to see breakthrough, we call it, there's two filters, a first and a second. If you start to see any breakthrough that goes into the secondary filter then, which is still treating it, that's when we change it out. So it's nice to reassure people that it's not that we're treating right to the limit, we're treating almost to nothing. And it stays that way for the life of that filter.
Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Bethany?
Yeah. Thanks, Ryan. So my thought was that as we're growing pretty fast, okay, and everything that's been decided takes care of things now. So, you know, you think about, and it has the O&M and that for a number of years, but but probably in the next 10, 15 years, we're going to see a sizable chunk of, let's say, the East Ravine, get filled up with homes and so forth. And I don't know, at what point do we feel that there's going to have to be a third treatment plant or some additional cost of that nature? And I don't imagine this settlement takes care of any of that, or?
Certainly, yeah, Councilmember Thede, that's a good question. So, what the state did look at was two parts to this plan. So, there's a 2020 option, which is today, but they also looked at 2040, following our comp plans, and they came up with a plan to essentially definitely meet the 2040 demands of the city. So, these plants will be sized for some extra space if we have to add more filters. They also would accommodate if we need to drill a new well. Right now, based on our usage, the wells is really about our peak demands, which we've been doing a really good job of. This well 13, which we would have the potential to upsize as a city, should get us through to 2040, is what we're anticipating. But, when we look at new wells, we'd want to take that into account, and then we'd probably put them in a location to get to those existing plants pretty easily. One thing we have asked the state is you've got a plan for 40 years of O and M, but only a plan for 20 years of capacity, so they really got to get those in line, right? If you're going to plan for 40 years of money, you better plan for 40 years of meeting our needs as well. So, that's part of this discussion, certainly, to make sure that's all in line.
Okay, good. Is that it? Yeah, Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, thanks to the staff. I know you've worked very hard, and all my council colleagues on working on this entire water situation. Couple things, I think for the public, just to kind of understand even the timeframe, like we've got this timeframe of the hearing, but then once everything kind of starts ballpark, what are we looking at for timeframe? And then also, what is our current condition of our temporary filters? Because I think some people might be listening and going, well, what do we have now, and what's, you know, how is that working? So, if you can address that, please?
Yep, yeah, certainly, Councilmember Mills. So, our temporary filters, we have three in place. One just came online this summer, and from what we see and how they operate, we're very comfortable with how those are going to continue to operate for the next three to five years, whatever may be needed. And we always like to use the word, we say the word temporary, but I always reassure people they won't fall apart in five years. They're built pretty sturdy, but they will meet those needs and our demands. In terms of the permanent plan, we really can't start spending money until the plan is completely finalized and we have these agreements with the state. We pushed pretty hard, that that needs to be, you know, maybe early 2021, because we want to start design, and we want to be able to start construction as soon as possible. We don't want to lose another construction season. That's something we pushed really hard over the last month. I don't know if we have a firm commitment from the state yet when they will have that finalized, but that's our hope. You know, by late February, we could have an agreement for the council to try and start moving forward on some of this. There has been some discussion among the working groups to extend the comment period, because it is a large document. I guess as Cottage Grove staff, we feel very strongly that we need to stick to the 45-day comment period, get your review done, get your comments in, and move on to the next step. We don't want to see this comment period, you know, drag out another 30 or 60 days, which will just delay the process. So, that is our hope, to stick to that comment period and start design work next year.
Thank you, Ryan.
And so, just a couple things, Ryan, I just want to concur with you on that. I mean, I know we've had that conversation, our administrator and I, that, you know, we've been waiting for years, and yes, we do have treated water right now, and it's temporary, but yet, and it'll be fine. But, I think we've waited long enough, we've had enough studies done, it's time to use the money that's been provided and planned for, and we've got the plan in place, it's time to move forward. So, I do concur with, I think, because I do know there's maybe some other cities that are at, one in particular, that would like to extend it longer, and I just think, you know, if we're able to do it, and I know you guys are, within the 45-day period, I believe that they should be able to do it too. Second thing I wanted to say, I'm very proud of the team here, because there was a couple things I just wanted to share with the public. One is on these temporary, or these lines that we're taking out, for example, the River Acres and the Granada neighborhoods, you had made a comment, and I just want to make sure it was resonating with the public, especially in those people that live in those areas, that in some communities, when they were putting in these lines, the homeowner was responsible for the hookup. Yes, they were getting reimbursed, but they were having out-of-pocket expenses. Our city would not allow that, meaning we stepped up and said, we were going to do it, we will deal with it, so that the homeowners did not. So, I thought that was a really important message to put out there, because I don't think some of our residents, maybe in those particular areas, understood the extra step that we did to help them and work with them so that they could have purified, clean water from the city. Second item, just to be very clear, is when you talk about the three options, and I know we're not, definitely not talking about option three, but I wanted to share with the public what option three really was, and you mentioned St. Paul Water Treatment. And there's nothing wrong with St. Paul Water, I want to be very clear about that. However, to our general public, just to be aware, to do that, the cost, and I'm not talking about the cost of, you know, being paid for by the state, but the homeowners in Cottage Grove would see a significant increase in their water bill, because in St. Paul, that's how it is, because of the differences. And so, with our value, and that was one of the messages we shared, of reason why we did not want to sign up to be hooked up to St. Paul Water, it had nothing to do with the quality of the water, anything like that. It had to do with the cost that it was going to, that our citizens were going to have to bear, that weren't going to be covered by the settlement. And then lastly, and you mentioned it earlier on too, I know Councilmember Olson was speaking with some neighbors down in Pine Cooley about getting their wells tested, I thank you for putting that out there. And I've also had recently, and you noted it too, some homeowners that have been concerned about health-based values, meaning for themselves, people possibly with cancer. And I just want to let the public know, I had also talked with James Kelly, who you're referencing, and he did say, if anybody has any questions or concerns, want to talk about the study, the studies that are ongoing, your health concerns, and maybe connections or no connection, whatever that might be, he is the person to talk to. He is the expert on this, he's been dealing with it from day one. And the fact that he has allowed you and myself to be able to give his name and phone number out directly, should be a testament to his personal commitment to making sure that we get to the bottom for everybody out there, and if people do have concerns or questions about their health, and, you know, what causes cancer, what could have caused it, and so on and so forth, he is the guy to talk to. So, I just wanted to mention that. So, I know you're going to bring it back to us at the next meeting for final approval before the end of October, but again, thank you so much for sharing this with us and the public. I'm excited to see we're finally getting to the point where we're going to be able to get this project, get it going in our city.
Definitely.
Okay, anything else, council? All right, thanks, Ryan.
Thanks.
All right, next on our agenda is consent calendar. Is there anything council would like to pull on consent?
Pull C.
Councilmember Thede, you're going to pull C. All right, seeing no one else, C, Councilmember Thede, is a Park Recreational National Resource Youth Commissioner appointment.
Yeah, I just wanted to just kind of mention that the chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission, Chairman Zerbi and myself, chatted with Breck Miller, who's a student, and about being on the commission and filling the, one of the two student vacancies, well, there's only one vacancy, it turns out that the other seat is full, but, and so he was very responsive, he was very excited about it, he was, you know, understood how the, we want them to be, you know, not just sitting up here being quiet all the time, but getting involved and making suggestions and bringing back suggestions from their peers and so forth in their age groups, in the youth, and what they are looking for. And so, he looked to be a very good candidate, so I would like to ask that you guys very strongly consider approving him for that spot, so.
Fantastic, and I guess I'll make a shameless plug on, we have lots of commission opportunities for both adults and youth, and this was obviously a youth seat, so if anybody wants to be involved in city government and be a part of the grassroots of what happens within this community, you're absolutely encouraged to be a part of our commissions and our advisory groups.
And with that, I'll just mention too, is that one thing that I always recommend to people that would like to be part of the council, is that they first spend time on commissions and get to understand what's going on in the city and so forth, and they'd be much, much better prepared to actually function productively on council. So, that's a message that I always put out to folks, so.
Perfect, sounds good. So, I was at on consent, is there, council, nothing else, then I'll look for a motion to approve consent.
I'll move consent.
We have a motion by Councilmember Thede, a second by Councilmember Olson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. So, if you're watching for anything that was on the consent calendar this evening, all of those items have been approved. Next is eight, which is approved dispersment or pay the bills, if I can get it out there. I'll look for a motion to approve the bills?
Motion to pay the bills.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilmember Dennis.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Mills. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Number nine is public hearings, we do have one this evening. A is the assessment of service charges for removal of tall weeds, and our finance director, Robin Rowland, is here.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. This evening, we are here for a public hearing. City ordinance 4-3-1 refers to noxious weeds and plants. This particular ordinance allows that growth over eight inches or accumulation of weeds and/or tall grasses is not allowed on city property. Our code enforcement officer takes care of making sure that we enforce this ordinance, and if we are required to do so, because a property owner does not handle the situation themselves, the city removes these conditions with a contracted service, and the property owner is then responsible for the bill that is sent to them with regard to move, or to removing these noxious weeds. If the bills aren't paid, the state statute number 429 is allowed, or allows the city to assess those bills, those unpaid bills, against the property. The property becomes an, or the assessment becomes a one-year assessment with interest and a fee, and it is assessed to the properties if the council deems the proper resolution is passed. This year, 68 violation letters were sent to various properties. 12 properties did not abate the conditions and were therefore handled by the city, as well as billed for that service. Seven instances, which are listed in your memo, were not paid, and as a result, we are here this evening to consider assessing those seven properties, four of which are vacant at this time. Notices were sent to all of the property owners, and it was published twice in the Low, I'm sorry, in the St. Paul Pioneer Press. This public hearing tonight allows for anyone who wants to protest those assessment, or that assessment against their property, they are able to do so. Once the public hearing is held, I would ask the council consider the assessment role for the removal of weeds on private property, which is identified on the agenda this evening. I would answer any questions I could.
All right, any questions for Robin at this point? All right, then I'll be official, Robin, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. Again, I don't see anybody in our audience here, and I'm not seeing anybody that's attending online and no Q and As, so anybody at all? All right, seeing none, I will go ahead and close the public hearing, and council, I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
All right, so I have a motion by Councilmember Thede, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Olson, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Next is 10, is bid awards, there are none tonight. 11 is regular agenda, there are nothing on a regular agenda tonight, and then we'll start with council comments requests, and I will start with Councilmember Mills.
I'm going to pass tonight, thanks, Mayor.
There you go, okay. Now, I'm going to move to Councilmember Dennis.
All right, thank you, Mayor. Well, I may make up for your time.
Yeah, there you go.
Couple different things tonight I'd like to share with the community. First and foremost, a number of us this evening attended the rededication of the Acacia Lodge Number 51 here in Cottage Grove. That is a historic building that actually plays home to our local Mason Lodge. There's a very neat story to this lodge, it's called a moon lodge, and it's the only one in the state that carries that designation. And what it goes back to is, when this lodge was started back in 1865, we didn't have any power out here. So, what happened is, the folks who were part of this, who would come either walking or on horseback or what have you, they benefited greatly from having a full moon in order to find their way to and from the lodge. So, there's a little bit of a neat history there, and there were a number of the brothers who did a tremendous amount of restorative work on that facility. Again, it's an old church that has been there for a long, long time, and so, we went out there, Councilmember Olson, Councilmember Thede, myself, we had a couple of our staff members that came out too, and it was really a neat thing to be part of. So, I would like to just thank all of the folks that were involved in that process. Restoring old structures in the community makes our city look better. The second thing I would like to bring up is a request, and I don't know if this is something that we would need to make a motion for, I'll let that be up to the mayor if he wants to call that, but I'm interested in seeing if we could reach out to our friends at SWCTC and see if they could do something to add more depth to the library of council meetings and other things that we have here. In the past, we used to have about a year's worth of activity, we could go back and review, and I know as a council member, there's times I like to go back and watch a meeting, because I want to refresh on exactly what the language was, and at this point, I really have no way of doing that. So, it would be a useful tool to myself and maybe others here too. So, Mayor, I'll ask you, is that motionable?
Yeah, it's funny, we do have, I shouldn't say funny, but we have the president of the cable sitting next to me here, Mr. Thede, and then our, yeah, chairman, sorry, and then our pro tem, obviously, over there for the backup, and that's Councilmember Olson. I'm assuming, council, are you good with passing that along for staff?
I'll second it, if it needs to be.
I mean, I got a comment.
Yes, all right, so we have a, you did a motion though, right?
Well, I'm just, I'm just asking if it would be needed, so, what I would do is make a very simple motion requesting that our staff reach out to our friends at SWCTC to see if they could utilize, you know, more of a digital library, expand the base of different meetings and such that they have on there, so that we can go back and have more, more actual content than maybe four or five months, but actually have a year or maybe two or three years' worth of data there, if they have the storage.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second by Councilmember Olson, okay. Further discussion, Councilmember Thede?
Yeah, so, having discussed this with Steve and so forth, I have already talked to Mark, and so we had a discussion about it, and the fact is that some time ago, it was decided to keep, I think, about a year or so like that, and then back when it was Granicus, and now it's, you know, more YouTube and so forth. We've also had some further discussions of actually tying SWCTC into our new scale computing hyper-converged system that's coming in, and instead of them getting, you know, going out and buying more stuff, and essentially, they'd rent space on our system and potentially be able to have more storage and manage some of that a little bit better. So, I think that's already in motion, not to coin it, the motion that we're presently in, but the wheels are in motion to actually go ahead and do that, so it should be a pretty easy, easy thing to follow up on, but.
Okay, well, so Dave, are you okay with that?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, so, we've got a first and a second on that.
So, we have a motion, a second, and a discussion. One other thing, just for our administrator, it would be interesting to know kind of what do other various cable commissions, length of time, do they do the same? So, that would be interesting to see if, because I do know you had shared with me too, that you had looked at a couple different ones, and some of them carry fairly extensive, others maybe not so much, so it would be nice to hear, you know, kind of what is the, what's the norm out there? So, good. All right, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion does carry.
Okay, and thank you, Mayor, I'll continue on. The next item that I would like to mention, both Councilmember Olson and I are part of the Cottage Grove Convention Visitors Bureau, and we've tried to find someone to fill an extra seat. fill, uh, an extra seat that we have available on that, uh, particular panel. So what I'd like to do is ask if, um, if maybe, uh, Joe, if we could put something out on the city's, uh, webpage, uh, advertising that there's an opportunity available there and, uh, you know, seek to find a really good candidate, uh, that could join that board with us. The next item is, uh, both Councilmember Olson and I are, are, uh, part of the membership of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon Group here, uh, in Cottage Grove and surrounding areas. And I know it's hard right now to find people to volunteer for things, but, uh, we were really seeking a few good folks who would be willing to, uh, step up. Uh, this is a, an amazing organization that, uh, that really provides, uh, you know, much-needed services for, uh, current and former military members and their families during times of need. And so we actually have a, a couple positions. We're trying to establish, um, some sustainability, uh, for the Board of Directors of the organization. So, um, again, now, I'm liaison and so this is not an official city thing, but we do provide assistance to them. So if there's anyone here that happens to be watching, that knows anyone who would be interested in being part of a really great thing, uh, please reach out to myself or Councilmember Olson or Ray Kane, who is the president of the Beyond the Yellow Ribbon. And, uh, there's information on that organization that can be found right on the city's website. The next item that I have is I wanted to take a quick moment to, uh, share condolences for, um, the family of Gonzalo Covado. Um, Gonzalo was my next-door neighbor for over twenty years. And, um, we learned of his passing here a couple days ago. And, uh, y-you would not find a kinder and more decent fellow than him. An amazing family man. And, uh, just wanted to, uh, to recognize him at this moment. Uh, he leaves a substantial family behind and, uh, I know in any time we lose people, it's a difficult thing. So I just wanted to mention the condolences for him. And then, uh, last but not least, um, Mayor, a week from today, you and I will be hosting, um, the long, uh, anticipated, um, Economic Development Forum. And we're going to do that right here in this room at seven o'clock. That'll be the fourteenth of October. And it's a great opportunity for folks to, uh, you know, if you want to learn a little bit about economic development and see some of the things that we've been doing that has helped to lead us to over a billion dollars worth of economic development success here over the past five, six years, this is your opportunity. So in addition to having some information that we're going to share, we're also going to open up a question, a Q and A session toward the end of the event. And, uh, it should be a really good time. Mayor, if you want to add anything else?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll just jump in. You know, it, it's funny because anytime I put anything out on Facebook about a new business coming to town or hey, what about this? Or a, a good friend of mine who's absolutely ecstatic and wants a White Castle in town. Not everybody cares for a White Castle, but the point of the matter is there are things that we do. And this, this session is really to share with the public, maybe some of the things they don't realize that we do behind the scenes to engage developers and end-users and things. And frankly, what can citizens do, uh, to help us bring new businesses and such to town? And of, of course, we want to support the existing businesses too. And we're going to be sharing about some of the things we do with that. Um, I will say, I, I know our, our communications person is in, in the audience here, and I know we put out a, uh, a web, web posting, or Facebook posting, I should say. And there is an opportunity, and I would encourage you as the public, if you have questions, you don't have to wait till that night, but we'll take them that night too. But if you have maybe some questions in advance, please put them on there. And then, uh, Scott's gonna get those to us so that, you know, as we, um, do the presentation that night and share with the public all the different things that we're doing at Cottage Grove to make this a, a great place to live, work, and play. Uh, the fact of the matter is, uh, we're gonna, we can answer some of those questions in advance. But again, we will take some, uh, live, uh, during that evening too, and, uh, look forward to hopefully, uh, a good crowd and a lot of, not like in person, this is all gonna be online, uh, but it is gonna be live. Uh, well, portions will be taped. There's gonna be some taped stuff, but we will be live. Uh, and I would love to see everybody join us and, and hear about, uh, the great things we're doing in our city.
All right. Thank you. And that'll be, uh, available for the public both on Facebook Live and also YouTube. So it should be a really great event and we're, we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Fantastic. Councilmember Thede?
I don't have anything else.
There we go. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you, Mayor. A few things for the public this evening. First of all, um, as I've been out visiting with a number of the neighbors, uh, throughout Cottage Grove here over the last month or so, um, one thing that has continued to come up is the concern that some folks have about, uh, traffic and speed in the community. And, um, you know, those of us who, uh, have spent some time on the council know that that's sort of a constant thing. Um, but there is one section of road that I wanted to bring up, and that is, um, the area of Jamaica Avenue and Sixty-seventh, where we now, if you're going north on Jamaica, we have a left-hand turn and we have a right-hand turn. It is some new development. Um, and then, uh, of course, we have the, the issue with military is now, uh, blocked off except for those folks who, who actually live on military. And, uh, I spent a little bit of time just kind of watching. Um, and I'm clearly not a, a engineer and I don't work for MINDOT, um, but it's, it's pretty clear that, uh, there's some, some additional traffic on that roadway. And so, um, in chatting with staff, uh, one of the things that, um, it, it appears we could potentially do to try to help the residents on Sixty-seventh, uh, either in, uh, the one neighborhood or the other, or both, is, um, request that the county who has control for that road, um, speak with MINDOT about, um, a, a traffic study to determine whether or not, uh, there needs to be any adjustment in speed. Um, you know, with the amount of young families that live in those two neighborhoods, is there anything we need to do with regard to, um, a crosswalk or anything like that so that folks, as they're trying to cross, uh, a busy roadway with, uh, a high rate of speed for drivers, um, can get to the various parks and trails, et cetera? And so, um, I wanted to, to just ask my council colleagues if, um, that would be something that, um, you know, we could potentially support is speaking with Commissioner Johnson or staff or both at Washington County, uh, about, um, you know, implementing some sort of a, a traffic study on that roadway now that some of the conditions have changed. Um, so I wanted to present that first of all, and I'll stop there for a moment.
I guess I'll look to our administrator. Is that, is that a, you're talking Jamaica on the area between Seventieth and Military, correct?
That's correct. Yep. We're Sixty-seventh Street. We now have Kingston Fields on the one side.
Yep.
And then we have the, the.
The reason I'm pausing is I know that we have an agreement with the county where eventually we're taking that road over. I just don't know, have we taken that road over already?
Uh, Mayor, members of the council, the section of Jamaica that is in question is, uh, turned over to Washington County. And so we can work with their engineering staff to make a request for a speed study because obviously the extension or expansion of that road, uh, would be dictated upon development. And we don't know the timeframe of that. So it'd be, uh, prudent for us to pursue a speed study at this time with Washington County.
Okay. I, I don't know that we need to necessarily have a vote on that since you, you're doing it that way. So thank you, Councilmember Olson.
Okay. Thank you.
But we'll check into that, obviously.
Yes. And, uh, so moving on, I wanted to thank, uh, Lori Levine, who is the director for the, um, Cottage Grove Area Chamber of Commerce, and Wayne Butt, who's the president, and then the membership of the chamber, uh, which includes Councilmember Dennis, um, for a really, really fun, uh, golf tournament this year at River Oaks. And of course, I, I would be remiss if I didn't compliment the team at River Oaks for doing, uh, a really great job with the socially distancing golf tournament, uh, um, organization that, that they seem to have now perfected. Uh, but, uh, my understanding is it was a, a great fundraiser for the chamber and it certainly was a fun day. Had a lot of time to admire, uh, Councilmember Thede's long drives, um, as mine were not nearly as long or as straight. Uh, and I believe Mayor Bailey, you actually were, uh, the winner of closest to the pin. So even a blind squirrel can find it out once in a while.
I was gonna say, I was definitely that blind squirrel on that one. I can't believe I actually made it over the water.
Very nice. Um, but it was really a great day of fellowship with our local business owners and, uh, a, a great tournament. The weather was, um, not quite as perfect as it is today, but it certainly was a great day for golf because any day you're golfing is better than a day at work. So wanted to thank everybody for that. Um, I also wanted to take a moment to remind the public, if you haven't already seen it, that our friends at Stone Soup Thrift Shop, which services all of South Washington County, are having their annual, uh, fashion show fundraiser. Um, I, I was lucky enough to participate as a quote-unquote model last year. And, um, I think I broke it because now they're doing it as a Zoom. So, um, you know, it was really fun last year and I know it's a huge fundraiser for them. The great news is you can still watch online. If you go to Stone Soup Thrift Shop's website or their Facebook page, they have the Eventbrite, uh, link that you can click on. You can register for free to watch the event. It's at, uh, seven PM on, um, Sunday, October the eleventh. And if you register, which is free, you have a twenty-five percent off coupon that will be sent to you for any time you want to go down and take a look around Stone Soup. And they have a lot of really awesome treasures down there. But more importantly, they really do a lot to serve people in our community who are met with tragedy or, uh, financial hardship or whatever the case might be. They donate an awful lot of goods to an awful lot of really good people. So I would encourage everybody to participate in that. I know I certainly will. You can also sponsor a model if you choose to. Um, I believe the sponsorship is fifty dollars. And of course, that goes directly to Stone Soup. So, um, I would challenge my council colleagues to, uh, sponsor a model if you're able. I, I plan to do that, um, because they didn't ask me to come back this year. So, um, well, which, which is understandable if, if you've seen me model. Uh, and then last but certainly not least, I wanted to take a moment to, um, talk very, um, plainly to the folks at home about our public safety department here in the city of Cottage Grove. There is a, a fundamental, um, core government function that, um, is essential to a great community, and that is public safety. Now, there are others as well. But, um, our public safety team here in the city of Cottage Grove is exceptional. They're not good. They're not great. They're exceptional. They are top of the line. And I want people to understand that we have a public safety model here in the city of Cottage Grove, and that is not common throughout the state of Minnesota. There are a few communities that have that. But what that means is we have an integrated team of police officers, firefighters, uh, and EMS paramedics who serve our community with distinction and honor every single day. And I want to illustrate what I mean by that. Earlier this week, um, there was a fully engulfed house fire, uh, on a property on Inger Court. And I believe, Mayor, you actually went to the event. Um, and our public safety team, on a very windy day, which is, uh, about the worst conditions you can ask for, for a fire like that, um, they responded quickly. They responded professionally. We, we were able to engage surrounding communities and mutual aid. And, um, they fought that fire. They made sure that none of the surrounding homes caught fire and that the family was safe and accounted for, even though this tragic event occurred. Additionally, earlier this week, I had a very dear friend of mine who had a, a health issue. And, um, uh, this, this was a issue that required a nine-one-one phone call. And, um, our, our EMS team arrived on scene. Um, they, they made sure that they assessed the situation. We also had police officer, paramedics who were on scene because as part of our public safety team, we have police officers who are trained in, um, you know, uh, as paramedics and, and early intervention for situations like that. And, um, thankfully, they were, they were able to, uh, get my friend treated, get him in an ambulance, get him to the hospital, and he's alive today because of it. Our public safety team, uh, responds to your house no matter what time of day it is, no matter what the situation is, at your worst possible moment. And they are there in about six minutes on a non-emergency, and they're there in about four minutes when they have lights and sirens flying. And that's anywhere in the city of Cottage Grove, which is unbelievable. This council makes sure that they have the facilities they need, that they have the personnel that they need, they have the equipment that they need, and most importantly, they have the training that they need to take care of every member of this community when they are at the worst possible moment in their life, whether it's a fire or a medical event or, um, God forbid, there's some sort of a crime that occurs. We are fully committed, and I'm speaking for my council colleagues, but, but more so myself, we are fully committed to making sure that every member of this community feels safe. And that when you need help, help is there. Now, it's true that public safety is the largest part of our city budget every year. And there's a lot of folks out there who like to talk about, um, you know, my taxes are too high and, and we, we pay too much to live in the city of Cottage Grove. And it's very popular to talk about that in an election year especially. The fact of the matter is, um, we control taxes in the city of Cottage Grove very well. And when you compare it to our peer communities, um, we are a shining example of fiscal responsibility. But we will never, ever, as long as I sit on this council, uh, and I have the ability to speak, um, we will never shortchange public safety because we will never shortchange you. The members of this community are like family. And if somebody in my family is in trouble or they need help or they're sick, I want them to have exactly what they need as fast as they need it with the highest possible quality. And our Cottage Grove Public Safety Department delivers that every day. So I wanted to just say thank you to all of our first responders, not just for what you did this week, but what you do for our community every single day.
Okay. Thank you. And it was, it was interesting because I was gonna bring up the, the fact that I, I stopped by that, that fire. And the, the only other thing I'll add to it, because I think, uh, Councilmember Olson, you stated it exceptionally well about our public safety team, is I do want to thank the, the mutual aid. Uh, we do it for other cities. Other, uh, cities came to our, our aid that day. And there was, the wind was really blowing that day. I mean, that we were lucky. Um, I, I shouldn't say that because I know our public safety did a great job of containing it, but we, they were lucky to keep it just to the house, the single house. And actually, not even the whole house. It started in the garage and kind of was working its way to the house. But, uh, the number of cities that showed up at our request, including, by the way, Regions, um, Regions Hospital had a, had a, a car there and they were checking blood pressure of our firefighters and oxygen, all that, which they normally do because that's, uh, to make sure they're doing okay. Um, it was very much amazing. So thank you to all of our partnering communities that, that helped us that day on that fire. Uh, and I, again, very happy to hear that everybody got out. Um, you know, property can be rebuilt and put back together. Families that, uh, perished do cannot. So, uh, but on a, on a separate but more positive, uh, well, both of its positive, but this one's too, is I just wanted to bring up, uh, October, as we all are, I think are aware, is Breast Cancer, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And the Public Safety Department, uh, with the public, uh, the Public Safety Board is actually once again doing the Pink Patch Program. Almost was gonna, it's a lot of P's in there. Uh, but if you want a Cottage Grove logo patch, uh, in the color of pink, you can either stop up during normal business hours here at the, uh, Public Safety, um, office over here, uh, the front desk. And for ten dollars, they will give you, or as many as you want, uh, they'll give you a patch. Uh, the proceeds for this actually go to support, um, uh, public safety members, uh, family members and such who are dealing with cancer, uh, breast cancer. So if you, uh, don't want to come up to City Hall because you are concerned about COVID, which is totally fine, or the Public Safety Department, uh, if you want to send, um, a check, uh, to the Public Safety Department, uh, and we're asking eleven-dollar check. And the reason is because we're gonna send you the check, the, the, uh, patch back, um, it made out to the Cottage Grove Public Safety Board, uh, to Captain Gwen Martin at twelve eight hundred Ravine Parkway South, Cottage Grove, Minnesota, five five oh one six. And then she will turn around and when she receives your check and your information, we will turn around and send you a pink patch or again, as many as you would like, uh, to do that to support, um, those in public safety that are dealing with cancer, uh, during, uh, Breast Cancer Awareness Month. So I just wanted to, uh, share that with you. And then again, thank you, uh, Councilmember Olson for bringing up the, the fire situation. And obviously, uh, Councilmember Dennis and I, we look forward to seeing the, everyone join us, uh, for the Economic Development, uh, forum that we're gonna have next Wednesday. Uh, next on our agenda is workshop, which is open to public. We don't have one this evening. Uh, fourteen is a workshop session closed to the public. Uh, we do have one this evening. Uh, and I just wanted to mention before we go into closed session, uh, that this meeting, uh, this closed session is pursuant to Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero four subdivision three and Minnesota Statute thirteen D point zero five subdivision four D, uh, for the city council to receive a security briefing from the emergency management team. So we won't be adjourning in here. We'll be moving to a private, uh, conference room, and then we'll be adjourning in there. So everybody have a great evening. Enjoy this lovely weather over the next few days. And that will and we'll see you in a few weeks.